The microphone, it might be better. Is that better, everybody? Yay, second time, third, fourth time, lucky. Right, okay, where did we get to? No acronyms. Let's remember to keep our questions to the point. Consider if our question has already been answered. Keep our observations focused and let's get through our meeting as quickly as possible, but with due care and attention. One other little addition there, can we please make sure that our laptop volumes are turned down as well? Okay, apologies. Louise, if you could just check that, please.
Yes, we have apologies from councillor Andrea Davis. Thank you. Attendees, in terms of cabinet members today, we're joined by councillor Dan Thomas and councillor James McCaskey. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Declarations of interest. Can I remind members of the committee to declare any interests they might have in any item to be considered at the meeting prior to that discussion taking place? We've got the minutes. Minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 25th of September 25 and the special meeting of the 22nd of October 25 are previously circulated and taken as read. These minutes were published with sufficient time for members to raise matters of accuracy. None have been raised, so given this, can members indicate they're happy for me to sign as an accurate record? Firstly, can we have a proposer for the minutes of Friday, the 25th of September?
So moved.
Yep, and a seconder? Yep, and hands please for approval? Yep, take that as approved. And then for the special meeting on the 22nd of October, please, please can we have a proposer? Proposer, thank you. And a seconder? Yep, and hands just to... Yeah, everybody, perfect. Approved. We do not have any items requiring urgent attention today, and we do not have any members of the public who have registered to speak. So we can move straight on to the scrutiny programme. Just for members to make the public aware, the following updates on the Corporate Infrastructure and Regulatory Services Scrutiny Work Programme. We have a visit to take place on December the 9th to the Materials Laboratory. Joint Adults and Children's Systems Replacement Project Standing Overview Group are to meet in January. That date is to be confirmed. On January the 29th, 26, our morning session will be the 2026-27 Budget and Capital Programme for 26, 27 to 2030, 31. Response from the Cabinet, locality budgets, it was resolved that the views of the Corporate Infrastructure and Regulatory Services Scrutiny Committee be noted and the committee be thanked for its views. The council's budget for 26, 27 will be subject to a thorough review by all three scrutiny committees, and we would like to invite the committee to reiterate its views during that process prior to debate at council in February 2026. January the 29th, 26, our afternoon session will have the Treasury Management and Investment Strategy 26, 27 and evaluation of the pothole repair trial. We will possibly have another item, but that's to be confirmed. February the 10th, 26, we will have a visit to the Network Operations Control Centre. And moving on, the Cabinet Forward Plan and the Corporate Infrastructure and Regulatory Services Risk Register have been circulated and taken as read. I have not received any emails from members, but if having reviewed these documents, members would like the items considered for the work programme, please do speak with me or the vice chair. Matters for consideration review, we're moving on to item five, street lighting trial update and future policy considerations. We have had a masterclass which set out previous scrutiny committees discussions and details and an update on the current trial. So I'd like to welcome Cabinet member Thomas, member for highways, and thank you for your attendance today. Please, can you introduce the report?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, good morning to committee members. So the report you have in front of you today as agenda item seven is basically asking you to look at what we are in the middle of doing. So we are halfway through a year-long trial. You'll see at three in the report, you'll see the background situation of where we were. You will see at table four, the state of play where we are at the moment as part of the trial. I don't propose to spend huge amounts of time on the report with you because I know that almost all of you attended the masterclass on this already, so we've covered a lot of this at a very useful lunchtime session. But there are a few points I'd just like to make, Chair, if I may. So over the last decade, our street lighting team has focused on reducing energy usage while continuing to deliver day-to-day functions, such as keeping the public safe. And I just want you to keep that at the forefront of your minds because that is extremely important. Public safety remains extremely important. But it's worth pointing out that we are ahead of most local highways authorities in terms of street lighting with our modern equipment and with our progressive dimming and switch-off patterns. We're ahead of the game in that regard. And the combined effect of that is a reduction in energy consumption of over 70%, which equates to an annual revenue saving of between £5 and £6 million. Obviously, that fluctuates depending on energy prices, but it has been over six and it is certainly at the moment over five a year. I think it's really important to say that whilst that is important, I come back again into the fact that safety has been the team's priority throughout. It remains the top consideration. We work really closely with colleagues in road safety and we work closely with Devon and Cornwall Police. You will see at section six of the report in representations, the police comments, which reflect the fact that the police are content with what we're doing. Okay. Ecology and environment, I've referenced, that's at section 10 of the report. You'll see that Mr Whitlock, principal ecologist, is here as well today. So if you've got questions on that, we've got officer here for you. But the main point here is that artificial lighting at night can significantly disrupt the natural behaviours of nocturnal wildlife. So the trial, we feel, has major ecological benefits, and there have been notable savings in carbon as well. Now, this year, the trial that you're looking at at table four has seen savings so far of 270,000. So that's on top as a result of the information you've got in table four. So at table four, you can see that now we've tweaked the trial again so that in Exeter, for example, so we've got those three tier areas, Exeter, market towns and rural. You'll see in Exeter, the dimming time is at half past nine. You'll see in the market towns, it's at half past eight, and in the rural areas, it's at seven o'clock. I think it's really important just to explain that as part of this introduction. The tiers are there to reflect the difference in movements at night. So Exeter clearly has a massive night time economy burdened by the student population. Although it's also worth pointing out, if you're looking at the table at 4.2, you'll also see Exeter members at 4.3. Most of Exeter is excluded from this anyway because most of Exeter is on the main lighting regime. And as you will be aware, the main lighting regimes are not affected. So much of Exeter, this won't apply to, the bits of Exeter it does apply to, the more outskirts parts. Even then, they are at a higher level to reflect the fact that there is more movement there than there is at the next tier down, which is market towns. And you see there that dim lighting kicks in at 8.30. And then you'll see again in the more rural areas, again, it kicks in at seven o'clock. And as I say, that is not reflective of us placing greater importance on one area or another. It's us reflecting the true movement of people and numbers in those various areas. Okay, so let me just go back to my report there. So the next point I'd like to make is on consistency. You'll have seen in the report that it's worth noting, we've talked about technology. We've got the technology to adjust individual streetlights, but we believe as a department that it's crucial to maintain a level of consistency. It's not practical to bespoke this to individual towns and villages. And one of the reasons for that is it's not fair on the travelling public who would drive around and find markedly different experiences depending on different communities. So to anticipate a potential question, if I may, I think my response to that question would be where there'd have to be a really robust argument on public safety grounds, supported by the police, for us to start playing around with the consistency question. We'd really like to start off at a point where we have clearly defined areas. I've spoken about Exeter and the fact that the previous scrutiny recommendations highlighted its night time economy as wanting a different approach. It's worth pointing out that the central management system in rural areas covers 80% of our streetlights. So there are some areas where we don't have the technology in place in those primarily rural locations where the cost per streetlight of installing the system becomes much, much more expensive. So it doesn't cover the whole county, but it covers, as I say, 80%. And then probably the last point really, because one of the things, one of the reasons we're talking about this today is because obviously it's important that we consult both with the public but also with council as well, is that it's important you know that during the initial six-week trial last year, there were lots of responses, several hundred responses received. But in the current trial, so far in seven months, we've only had 11 inquiries about what we're doing. And that's despite the fact that it's been publicised through BBC News, which wasn't the case previously. It's also worth pointing out that when we did our consultation previously, we had lots of, we asked questions of the public about when are, when have you noticed the difference in streetlight dimming? And a significant number of the responses gave the wrong answer. They didn't, they gave us dates when that wasn't actually what we were doing. So I think we've got a slide, I know you've got a slide, Chair, haven't you? That shows the difference between 100% and 40%. And it's quite, I'm going to use a pun here, it's quite illuminating. Yeah, I know, but is that bad? I thought it was. Oh dear. Anyway, I think, I think that's pretty much everything I, everything I wanted to say in terms of. I just can't stress enough that, you know, yes, this saves money. And of course, saving money is really important, particularly at the moment for this county council. But that doesn't mean that we've sacrificed public safety. And I think that's the message I want to leave you with. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Thomas. We're just seeing if we can get the visual up. Perfect.
Yes.
If everybody would like to just have a little look at that, so you can see the difference or not. Yeah, yes, next side piece, I think that's. Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything, the other, I put my teeth back in, the officers would like to add, especially having seen those pictures? No, we're okay. All right then, I'll now move to questions. Do please catch the eye of myself or councillor, oh, the councillor Mitchell? Oh, yeah, okay. Sorry, just to catch the eye, please, of councillor Rayco myself, if you'd like to speak, but councillor Mitchell, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of points. The first one is sort of generic to a whole concept of having a 12-month pilot or project, or whatever you call it, and reviewing it halfway through the year. So is there an intention to do an end-of-12-month report and report back to someone? Also, my concern in regard to this, of course, is we're considering it now in the winter months, when the pilots are still running through the winter months, when it will have most effect on communities on the dark evenings, whereas in March and April, conditions are somewhat different. So I'd like a view on what's happening at the end of the project and what review is taking place. And I, and in relation particularly to Exeter and the division I represent, the views, you talk, and as I say, you've talked about the position of Exeter and you talk about the night time economy. Clearly, that is important and the number of pedestrian movements, particularly around students. I know changes were made in regard to the university's request on lighting. But we've got a large workforce in Exeter that works during the night, is on shift at the RDNE and various other places. And whilst the main lighting situation is, once you go onto the main roads, what I'm getting is comments from people who live off the main road before the difficulty they feel they're facing. And I'm just wondering whether dimming is a better position for a longer period in Exeter at night rather than a total switch-off. And also, as I say, the idea of a switch-off at one, just after midnight, I would point out for many of our younger people in Exeter, that's when they start, not when they finish.
Thank you, Chair. On the first point, councillor Mitchell, we want to be in a position when the trial runs out that we know what we're doing. So we're doing this now so that we get a clear steer from scrutiny to take to Cabinet so that in turn we can make the decision as to whether or not to carry the, I mean, personally, I very much hope that you will support this decision and that we will carry on. But for us to do this in good time, we need to go through this process now so that by the time we get to April, we've gone through scrutiny, a recommendation for scrutiny has gone to Cabinet, Cabinet can then make the decision. And then we can either change things or carry on. And my hope is that we'll be able to carry on, or if we're tweaking, we're tweaking in a positive way. What I don't want to happen is for us to get to the end, run out of time and then say, oh, now we've got to go through a scrutiny and Cabinet process before we can carry on. I just, I want us to be smooth, as it were. So that's, that's the reason for doing it now, for having input now. There's also the fact, of course, we've got a brand new committee. So that, you know, this is the first option really, that this committee's had to talk about this. And that's important as well because this trial was agreed by a previous council. So there's a democratic question around that as well, why we're doing it. On the second point, on Exeter and the switch-off, you know, I hear you. And you're absolutely right, for lots of students, you know, I'm not sure there's a time that we could make it later, and I feel right. I mean, I'll come to Alex on the rationale, if you like.
Thank you, councillor Thomas. I think it's probably just important to reflect on how we ended up with the three regimes that are currently being trialled. When we brought this to scrutiny, the best part of 18 months ago, we originally had an option around two regimes. And scrutiny, the committee at the time felt it was important to recognise that night time economy in Exeter and hence recommended a third regime specifically for Exeter to Cabinet at the time. Obviously, that could be tweaked further if we don't feel it's right for our communities. You reference that we worked with the university, we have their safe walking routes. There was specific funding around safer streets, which has not been affected. We continue to work with the police. But ultimately, if we, if we don't feel that Exeter regime is correct or exactly as we want it, it could be tweaked. And just lastly, the point around sort of further dimming or switch-off, I would also just reflect the feedback form we circulated that councillor Thomas referenced, where we had several hundred responses, the vast, vast, vast majority of those responses picked up on the switch-off times that we originally trialled, the responses weren't keen on further switch-off. But very, very few of those responses actually noticed any dimming, so that would perhaps feed into the point around dimming.
Come back for clarification on councillor Thomas's point. I'm still somewhat concerned that the trial as showed at 4.1 finishes on the 31st of March 2026, but the Cabinet are making a decision in February 2026. Why can't the Cabinet make their decision after the 31st of March?
Because we, if you think about it, we wouldn't be compliant with national standards. At the moment, this is a departure which we've approved, but we would leave ourselves open to the fact that we would have to go back, I'm assuming, we would have, I'm looking at, yeah, we'd have to go back to the previous position because we wouldn't have the, we wouldn't have the authority to continue with what we're doing now. So by doing this, by going through this process now, we will have a seamless, we will have a seamless carry-on. We wouldn't be able to have a seamless carry-on because of the timescales of having to come to scrutiny and then having to go into Cabinet. That's, I think that's the point.
You've inherited the situation, but it does seem odd to plan a pilot that forces you to make a decision in order to be compliant before your pilot finishes. And I know you've inherited this situation. I'm surprised this wasn't a thought of when the thing was first designed.
Well, I suppose, through you, Chair, if I may, I suppose logically, the way you would get around that would be that you would have a pilot that ended in the middle of winter so that you were considering it in the summer, I suppose. You know, you'd change the, because there was, there would always be a case where you need to, you need to ratify the pilot to allow it to carry on. And if you don't do that before the pilot finishes, then there'll be a time period between the pilot finishing and the new set of play being established. And I guess we didn't want to leave a gap, that's the point. I mean, ultimately, if you're unhappy, councillor Mitchell, there is, throughout the process of the pilot, you'll have the opportunity as a councillor to come and buttonhole me or officers, you know, indeed, right up to the point of Cabinet, you'll have the opportunity to come to Cabinet, which will be another, I think Cabinet considering this in February? Yeah, so you'd be able to, I'm seeing nods, so you could come in February and say, you know, where you're another four months on and say, actually, I'm not happy about this and this. And at that point, Cabinet could then choose to listen at that point. Because of course, whatever comes from scrutiny today will be a recommendation. You can add to that recommendation at Cabinet yourself.
Okay, councillor Ead, please.
Thanks. Yeah, this all seems mostly extremely positive. I've got two questions on consultation and liability. I know there was a feedback form circulated during the original six-week trial, I think it was last year, but there hasn't been a formal consultation on this trial, even though it has been communicated, as you said, through BBC. And the impact assessment that was done previously identifies that women and other vulnerable people feel less safe after dark and experience higher levels of harassment. And that Devon County Council encourages feedback to help identify and adjust any negative impacts. But if we're not encouraging feedback because we're not doing a consultation, how are we taking account of any issues that might be arising? And sometimes like the varying light levels, it might be very subtle, people might not be able to pick up on it, but they are feeling less safe and they might not really realise why. So I think people do need to be, have it explained to them what's happening. And if they do feel less safe, and we do need to actively seek consultation on that. So are we doing, will we be doing a formal consultation? And secondly, on the liability, so in terms of the dimming, so it's, the report notes we're dimming below British standards, which will open us up potentially to liability if there was an accident or some issue. Are we confident that that risk of liability is low?
Okay, through you, Chair, if I may. On the consultation point, the first consultation we did, I'll be completely frank with you, councillor Ead, was totally hijacked on social media. We had one particularly orchestrated campaign in one area. A lot of the responses, as I've said before, that came back, people couldn't actually identify when dimming had happened and when it hadn't. The path we've gone down this time, we aren't actively considering further consultation based on the responses we've had from a scheme that's been much more publicly advertised than the previous one, arguably through BBC coverage. So there isn't a plan to consult any further at this stage based on the inquiries we've had. On the violence against women and girls point, if you have a look in the report at section six, then you will see that there is actually specific reference at 6.2 through the police and violence against women and girls. So, you know, in that regard, you know, I go back to the point we were making about, about public safety. We work with the police, the police are broadly supportive of what we're doing on this point. On the last question, I'm going to refer to you, Alex, if I may, or indeed to the director.
So departures from standard are fairly common practice, I have to say, within the engineering world. So standards are written at the national level, they're not the policy, it's not the policy type things that we follow here at county. And they're usually set specifically on certain subjects. As a director and a Rob, as my deputy, we always have to consider departures from standard in the round. So in some cases, some of the ecological issues associated with carrying out works far outweigh the liability potentially associated with a departure from standard. In this case, we have a British standard on the lighting levels that should be applied to roads. We're clear that we are not removing the lighting on areas where there is a requirement to have lighting. So for example, around traffic calming issues. However, we are satisfied that the balance of the dimming regimes that we're putting in, which are below the national standards, balances out other issues that we do have to consider. However, one of those issues clearly is road safety and personal safety. So where we are aware of issues, yes, we will deal with them, but and we have looked at some individual sites, but generally, the issue of the general departure from policy, from, sorry, from standard regarding the dimming is not an issue that I'm particularly concerned about.
Councillor Ead, do you, any of you have more questions? You're done. Thank you. We'll move on to councillor Abbott, please.
Thank you. I have three parts or three questions maybe. The statement is that we have 80,000 odd streetlights and 66,000 cells, which begs the question, are there one, two, or three, or many streetlights in a cell? And what exactly does a cell do, which a streetlight doesn't do? Do you control a cell at a time? And maybe I'll come back after that.
I'm going to defer, that's a technical question.
Thank you, councillor Thomas. The best, the best way I can describe it, councillor Abbott, is you're bang on. We have around 80,000 streetlights in Devon, 66,000 of those have a clip-in cell on the top of them. I'm looking outside the window here, which I appreciate not everyone who's dialed in can see. On the top of the streetlights, you can see those cells. They talk to base stations, which is how we set the dimming profiles for switch-off times. And they also have much wider benefits too. For example, we can have remote fault reporting coming straight back to the office so we can keep the number of street lighting faults down at, down at any one time. So that's, that's really the role of the cell, whereas the lantern is the actual LEDs themselves.
Thank you. Completely different interpretation of cell from what I had thought of, that's fine. Does, does that mean that for any street lamp with a cell on its top, that we can control it individually? And my example would be that if there was a traffic incident, could we support the emergency services by turning on the 20 around a junction?
Every cell can be individually controlled, that's correct. What I would, would just refer back to was councillor Thomas's point around consistency. So in theory, if the emergency services came to us around a specific road traffic collision, yes, those cells would be individually controllable. But we've never had that scenario, the police have never asked about in all the dealings we've had with the police on this trial. That has not been a specific ask so far.
Sure, thanks. They may not know that there's an opportunity, of course. They may just think all the streetlights are off at this time of the, of the day. My, my, my last one is to do with paragraph 5.5, which talks about the possibility of further dimming. But ends with, one of the reasons it might not be beneficial is due to heat loss, et cetera, at lower outputs. Heat loss from the lamp? Heat loss affecting the brightness? What exactly is going on there?
So, so depending on the equipment in question, there's a slightly different sort of sweet spot, if you like, where the relationship becomes nonlinear between dimming and saving. The general sort of industry recognised point is around that, sort of between 30 and 40%. And typically, the drivers, the LEDs themselves, actually, the heat losses. I mean, if you dim much further, you don't achieve linear savings and therefore the carbon and financial savings are not linear beyond that point.
Maybe I'll catch you over a coffee.
Councillor Abbott, okay, if I could call councillor, I've got an excellent service, please.
Thank you, Chair. I refer to section 4.4 and also seven on the last bullet point regarding safety, that you work with the road safety team. I'm wondering if there is merit in working with Rosper and our police, emergency services, the media to wear white at night or be seen at night. We've had a lot of concerns about built-up areas. However, most of Devon is rural and we, if we look at statistics, I think it's 40% of all road accidents happen during hours of darkness despite significantly less traffic. And I don't know about you, but I nearly ran over somebody the other day. Fortunately, I don't go fast on the little lanes. And I was really shaken up and I'm darn sure that the pedestrian was as well. And his attire was completely black. And I firmly believe that we should work and I would like a recommendation, I'd need some help, whether we work with the accident prevention and/or, or perhaps you're already doing that. And if you can just clarify what you're actually doing, because I'm sure we're all feeling, we're all in the same boat here.
Through you, Chair. Thank you councillor Celis. The director and I are again on the same mind, which is vision zero is actually where we would look to, to go. I sit on vision zero on behalf of the county, very happy to, to take that point forward councillor Celis and have conversations around that. Because actually I think one of the things vision zero is doing at the moment is walkability, which is a, a project similar to bikeability aimed at schoolchildren walking safely to school. But actually what you're picking up on is actually something which refers to people of all ages and actually thinking about how you make yourself safe as a pedestrian on the road. Very happy to pick that up with vision zero. Happy to pick that up with you as well outside of this, as you, as you, as you like.
Well, I'm sure I'm not necessary because I think it's just common sense, isn't it? But certainly if I can help, I certainly would. I would also suggest equestrian as well. There's, we, we all know the issues. However, I don't think people are taking heed. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Celis. We move to councillor Ketchin, please.
Thank you, Chair. I welcome this initiative. It's great to see Devon ahead of the curve. We are a rural constituency, so it's only right that we should do so. Couple of things. One's just a sort of minor technical point, just so that we've all made sure we've got the right data. And three point four, it mentions that we're using a domestic, we're using a, a rate of twenty four pence per kilowatt hour, which I understand to be a domestic rate rather than a commercial rate. And I just wonder if we're using the right costings to get the right savings. So that the, we know what we're dealing with. It's just a minor point, but you know, I, I work with people who run businesses and the commercial rates for them are very different from the business rates. So the savings might be more, they might be less. I don't know. So that, I'll just move on though. That wasn't my main point. And as I say, I welcome, I welcome the, the new technology with its capacity to do these hyper local sort of adaptive changes based on police feedback. That's important. But we have other stakeholders as well. And I represent the city centre along with councillor Richardson and councillor Mitchell as well. There's a little bit to be said about the night time economy above and beyond what has been said. The night time economy isn't Exeter. The night time economy is largely the city centre. People do go to work in other areas like Souton and industrial estates, the R D N E, which are outside the city centre. But the, 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 the element of safety is, I think, much more relevant to the city centre, in particular the economy there. Because often at night, people are a little bit compromised, shall I say. And sometimes then, and safety, if we, if we get into that, is, 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 is a slightly different issue than a travel to work issue, but there is overlap. My, my, my point is it comes back to this capacity to do these hyper local adaptive changes and, and, and bringing in stakeholders. Have we engaged in Exeter in particular with this, the business community? So they, they represent not just customers, they represent people travelling to work to get their views on the dimming in the city centre. I would argue across Exeter, it's, it's probably quite like the rest of, of Devon, but the city centre is a different beast. Can I ask that we engage in Exeter? Can I ask that we have some thought to the city centre in particular? Appreciate the comments already made about main roads. Many main roads are in the city centre. I get that. But there's many streets that aren't and there are opportunities there for mischief. Ultimately, I think safety is as much about perception as it is about reality. And if you perceive that you're at risk, that changes your behaviour irrespective of whether there is reported danger. So I do, I do think we need to manage perception, particularly in the city centre and particularly with feedback from groups like in Exeter. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ketchin. I'm certainly happy to take an action to talk within Exeter on this one. We haven't spoken to them specifically about streetlights, but just for awareness, we do work with them closely on all sorts of other things. Whether that's just in the last month around the Christmas light or seasonal decorations in Exeter as an example. So yeah, we can, we can take an action to work with them on this.
I'm very happy if the committee goes the ways and the officers do that, that'd be fantastic.
Thank you. We move to councillor Richardson, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. It's basically just building on councillor Ketchin, Ketchin's point. I know it's a few years ago now, but in twenty twenty two, there was a survey done in Exeter, which said more than eighty five percent of women feel unsafe walking alone down the street at night in the city centre. Now, I reckon that probably hasn't changed too much in the last three years. It's good to know that the Violence Against Women and Girls advocate and the police are being consulted with. But considering students make up a lot of the night time economy during the week in particular, where it's less busy than a Saturday or Friday night, for example. And, and most people in the city centre will be students. I just wonder, have the student guild at the University of Exeter been consulted throughout? And if not, perhaps it would be good to engage with the, the university student guild. Thank you.
I think you've heard councillor Richardson, there is an absolute commitment that we will revisit Exeter. I think that's fine. What I would say about violence against women and girls is that there is no streetlight that I can create that will make women and girls feel safe. The problem is the perpetrators of violence against women and girls. And actually, that's the reality. But, but notwithstanding that point, I'm very happy that we can, we'll do as much as we can. But I, you know, ultimately it's the perpetrators of those, of those awful offences that are the problem. And, and we as men, because it's usually us as men, actually need to acknowledge that quite frankly. But having said that, there is a clear commitment. We will come back to Exeter.
Thank you councillor Thomas. It's, it's good to hear. You know, I think the point is about perception. And, you know, we need to make sure that as a council, we are, you know, proving that we're doing something about it. And so we, you know, we just need to be careful, you know, that, you know, whilst I think there's lots of very positive things with this review. You know, it's using modern technology and it's, it's, it's a very good trial in lots of other areas. We just need to make sure that, yeah, perception is key. And, you know, we are making sure that as a council, we're telling women and girls in the city centre that we're going to be keeping them safe. Thank you.
If, if I may, I totally agree. What I would say, of course, is firstly, it's a trial. And one of the things about a trial is that trials can be tweaked. And the other thing is that, that, you know, the, 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 the three tiers, if you like, are representative of how we are trying to place safety where the need is greatest. So there was a question at the scrutiny masterclass, there was a suggestion that somehow, you know, we were neglecting the safety of people in rural communities over those in the, in the cities. And of course, the reality is it isn't about that. It's about where the risk is greatest. And where the risk is greatest is where we need, and the point you're making chimes to that. So I thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Raik, please.
Thank you, Chair. So sixty six thousand cells, eighty thousand streetlights. So that gives us the eight percent, doesn't it? That, that you were talking about eighty two and a half percent by my maths, but which is, which is wonderful. Is that because we're in, in a rollout that hasn't got to the end yet? Or the remaining fourteen thousand streetlights kind of orphans that will never be redeemed?
An unfortunate choice of words councillor Raik, but probably nearer the latter than the former, I'm afraid. It's literally those areas that are, are, are just, you know, the exponential cost of, of, of putting the equipment in, you know, far outweighs all the benefits. I think that's the reality, isn't it?
Thank you. The, the original funding for the central management system was based on eighty percent and that was purely on the cost per unit. Once we get into the sort of generally more rural areas, the cost per unit of installing that central management system goes up exponentially. So a good, a good example, recently we were contacted by the local council in Moorbath up to the north of the county. But there's, there is no central management system there. It's a, it's a village with just nine streetlights. The cost of installing it per unit is, is far higher there. So at the moment, there's no funding in place for the remaining twenty percent.
So, I mean, presumably the cost of manual maintenance therefore is similarly higher. I mean, we have to send someone out to tweak those lights manually if, if they need tweaking.
The, the, the option is not there to tweak them in those cases. The, the cells for the sort of historic lanterns, if you like, are pre programmed. So the switch off times or dimming is pre programmed in those cells.
Again, notwithstanding that and councillor Thomas's comments on consistency, I mean, where, where in my part of the world, some villages are dark, other villages are lit, some of the villages that are lit would rather not be. And I'd be keen to see a sort of clear pathway offered to, to communities who, who want to address, address that. Going forward, if, if they fall within the CMS, sorry, central management system. You know, if their, if their lamps are amenable to that.
I think the starting principle councillor Raik is there would need to be, as I said, I go back to what I said before, there would need to be a robust public safety argument. I mean, if, if we've got one, then we will support that, that I think in fairness to, to the, to the consistency policy there. So what you're effectively saying is that the areas that, that are part of the seventeen and a half percent are at this level. And then the next, and then the rural tier might be slightly different because we can't change those. If that's the case, in consistency terms, we could either return to the same level as the ones that we can't alter or we can try and be pragmatic. But, but, you know, by doing nothing, we would have to go back to the pre-trial state, as it were, everywhere to keep them consistent with the ones that we can't alter. And I think that's the challenge. So we're trying to be pragmatic here. You know, I'm happy to talk to you offline about individual communities, but I, I think the general principle is we've got a lot of individual communities. And what we don't want is to start creating a, a tapestry, an illuminated tapestry any more than we have already, where you, you know, you have different patterns. Because I'm not, I don't think that will help the travelling public. It might help an individual person in an individual community, but we're looking at the wider picture here.
Fantastic. Would anybody else like to offer up any other questions? Nope. Great. In that case, I'll now close the questions. The committee is asked to consider the proposals on Devon County Council's street lighting dimming policy and advise Cabinet of any comments. If we've got strong recommendations and somebody would like to move, then please do so. If not, we will, the minutes of the item will be submitted to the Cabinet for their consideration. Yes, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to propose one suggestion, if this is right. And that is to include in the minutes to suggest the Cabinet to engage with stakeholder groups like in Exeter or the Student Guild or other groups to ensure feedback on the trial is properly obtained by these strategic partners for effective conclusions to be drawn on the trial. Something, sorry, it's a bit wordy, but hopefully sort of understood that.
Yes, thank you Louise.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, that's, that we will capture that in the minutes. I've got general notes around considering more detail the impact of the current street lighting regime, specifically in the Exeter city centre, including with key stakeholders such as in Exeter and the University of Exeter Students Guild for due consideration at the Cabinet meeting in February. Also have noted for the minutes as well, the Cabinet member to specifically work with vision zero around the campaign to focus on being visible at night for pedestrians, cyclists and other road users. And with specific consideration around the violence against women and girls, based on the feedback from, from councillor Ketchin and councillor Richardson. Those are the keynotes that we've, we've picked up for, for the minutes.
Okay, thank you. Can I just check with councillor Celis as well that she's happy with that?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, thank you all. In that case, the minutes of the item will be submitted to the Cabinet for their consideration. We'll have a short break now before we move on.
Not sure, but aren't we going to vote on the recommendation?
It's not a recommendation. We've just put it into the minutes.
Well, it's in item one on the agendas as recommendation.
I'll move to Louise, hold on.
The recommendation is to consider the proposals of the Devon County Council's street lighting dimming policy and advise Cabinet of any comments. If you want to move that as a recommendation, I'm not quite sure what you're telling the Cabinet to do from that. The minutes will pick up, are going to pick up the, what you've considered here today. They're not verbatim minutes, but the minutes will address the key, the key points raised here by the committee. If you've, it's kind of, it says recommendation, but it's more of a, and it's more sort of asking scrutiny what to do, like giving it a direction here today. I don't think the monitoring officer's got anything further to add to that, but I'm not sure what you'd be.
I think the recommendation is to consider. So as you said, it's more of a minute, but technically it's a recommendation.
It is technically so.
Quite happy to say, yes, you've got the option to vote on it or you can put it to the minutes.
Yeah.
But I'd say voting on it deals with the fact it is a recommendation.
Happy to do that.
We've had a situation where we've discussed the report, we've questioned the report. The clerk has given us a summary of the points that are going to be in the notes. None of us have suggested any further points to the notes. And I think it's only right now as a committee, we endorse that view. So that goes forward to the Cabinet.
That's absolutely fine councillor Mitchell. Yep.
Can we have a proposer please? Thank you. Kitchen and a second please. And a voter, show of hands, perfect, carried. Wonderful. Now we'll have a, I don't know what time it is, please Louise, we'll have a short break, eleven eighteen, back at half past. If everybody can be back at half past, please, a short refreshment break. Okay, everybody, I make it eleven thirty. Thank you. I'd like to welcome Cabinet Member councillor Bukowski, Cabinet Member for Finance. Thank you for your attendance today. If you could introduce the report, please.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Councillor James Burchkovsky, Cabinet Member for Finance and Public Value. Chair, before I invite Mark Gayler, our Head of Pensions and Investments, to take the committee through the detail, I wanted to highlight a few points that deserve attention at this stage in the year. We're seeing an underspend on the minimum revenue provision driven by slippage in last year's capital programme, rather than any structural shift. Borrowing remains broadly on the path that we set out through, though cash flow has delayed the point at which we actually need to enter the market. The only new loans taken out to date have simply refinanced existing short term debt. So the overall level of external debt has not grown. Our officers are also exploring opportunities to repay and replace certain long term loans at lower rates. These potential savings are real, but the timing hinges on daily movements in the gilts market. So we'll only proceed when the conditions allow. Our investment income is currently tracking in line with budget with a modest surplus expected. And looking ahead, Chair, the position remains shaped by the SEND deficit, Special Educational Needs and Disability Deficit, which continues to erode the available cash balances. As a result, next year's strategy will need to plan for further external borrowing as part of maintaining sustainable cash flow. So within that context, Chair, I'll hand over to Mark Gayler to add any further comments and answer any questions the committee may have.
Thank you.
Yes, just just to add a little bit of detail to that, I'll I'll try not to repeat anything that's already been said. So when we set the Treasury Management Strategy for twenty five, twenty six, we'd set out that we would need to borrow around fifty million additional external debt in order to finance the twenty four, twenty five and twenty five, twenty six capital programmes. Members will be aware that in the past, we have undertaken any borrowing necessary for the capital programme from internal borrowing from our internal cash balances, but we are limited in our ability to do that now because of the erosion of those cash balances by the special educational needs deficit. Having said that, cash flow tends to work in that we get a lot of money in at the beginning of the the financial year. And then that starts to taper off during the autumn and into into the new year. So we haven't actually reached the stage where we need that external debt to fund cash flow. So by holding off on that as long as possible, it means that we can save on interest costs that would obviously be associated with that borrowing. As councillor Bukowski has said, we are looking to refinance two or three of our existing longer term loans. Generally, depending on market rates, we may have to pay a premium on on a higher rated loan if we repay it early. But we may get discounts on on other loans. So we're trying to offset a loan where we will have to pay a premium against loans where we could repay them at a discount. And then we'll need to take out new loans to the same value. But if we can do that on a short term basis, we can do that and save in the region of a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand pounds on our interest payments. That will depend very much on where we are with the market. We're looking to do that in, within the next week if we if we can. But it depends very much on where where gilt yields sit. And so we we had an announcement of the current rate of inflation earlier in the week. Those sort of announcements have have the capacity to move gilt yields up or down, depending on whether it's more or less than the market expected. But in in this particular case, had minimal impact. And the the key point is the impact it makes on on the premium that we would have to pay to to repay the the bigger and higher rated loan. But hopefully we can report back on that to the next meeting of this committee in January, when we will bring the twenty seven, twenty eight, sorry, the twenty six, twenty seven Treasury Management Strategy. As as has already been said, we're expecting investment income from the investments that we make of the the cash balance that we do have available to be broadly in line with budget with potentially a small surplus. One of the things that was discussed the last time I came to this meeting was whether we should look to do more benchmarking of the performance of our Treasury Management Investment Strategy. We we have done some checking out of a couple of options, one of which was no longer available. We can commission from our Treasury advisers a benchmarking service for quite a small amount of money. I think it says in the report that we would be looking to do that, but we we've held off on that pending getting any further views from this committee. I, to be honest and say, I'm not sure that what value that we would obtain from that. We use three firms of brokers in terms of making investments, which may be with banks or building societies or lending to other local authorities. We get rates from them on a daily basis, so we pretty much know what the market rate is for any investments we make on an ongoing basis. That the the only differential might might be whether whether we're adopting a lower risk strategy than other authorities. Where where, for example, in the past, they may have borrowed to invest in commercial property to achieve an investment return. And and they will have have a different risk profile and a different return profile to us. But we've always adopted a relatively prudent, low risk strategy in the way we manage the council's investments. And particularly now, when cash balances are a low level and we need to rely on a greater level of liquidity, would not be the right time to try and invest in a more risky form of investment. So I think that that sums up where we are. As as has already been said, we will bring the twenty six, twenty seven Treasury Management Strategy to the January meeting of this committee. A big part of that will continue to be influenced by where we are with the special educational needs deficit and the impact that has on our cash resources.
Thank you, Mark Gayler. I'll move to questions, please, members. Councillor Mitchell, please.
Uh, thank you. In relation, you're saying that effectively this borrowing be renewed within the next week or so. Is that going to be dependent on what happens? Is the budget going to be influenced during that? Is it likely to take place before the budget or after the budget? And I'm assume it's linked to a certain percentage rate that you're looking to achieve, because that will balance out with the additional cost you're going to pay by early repayment. And in regard to the refinancing of these loans, are they for the same period, the extended period or for a shorter period than before? And the second question, which might be more to James, I don't know. Could you talk us through the funding of the deficit for SEND? How much is actually created by us and how much were covered by government funding?
Thank you. Shall I take the first bits first? So so the so we would be refinancing longer term loans with shorter term loans. That's that's the main way that we can achieve a saving. We'll probably be looking at something around three years rather than current loans which go well into the future. Now, clearly there are some risks involved with that because they will then need to be further refinanced in three years' time. The general advice and looking at markets is that we we're still expecting rates to come down. So that would reduce that. And hopefully, at the point that we get to three years' time, we we can re still be able to then re refinance those at a further lower rate. But clearly, that that's dependent on market movements. The point about the budget. If conditions look look right, then we will aim to to the refinancing of these loans before the budget. As as I said, gilt yields are very much dependent on what the market thinks is going to happen going forward. And if something comes up that the market is not expecting, then that can have a significant impact on on markets and significant impact on whether we can achieve the objectives of the refinancing through through doing so. So as I said, sort of announcements about inflation and whether that's more or less than the market was expecting or employment, things like that often have an impact on what how the market perceives, equally government borrowing figures. And those sorts of issues will have an impact on the the way the market sees the future and therefore on gilt yields. So if we can do this before the budget, it's probably helpful because the budget would add in an element of uncertainty as we don't know how the markets might react after the budget. And that may make the the transactions that we would need to do less beneficial. And that may make the transactions that we would need to do less beneficial.
Do you want to come back there? Are you okay?
No, I think it's very prudent, I think is the word to use in relation to that. Just if James could follow up, give us a little bit more detail on the operation of the SEND.
Through you, Chair, I think what's being asked is the figures for the SEND deficit. So I'll give you the month six figures because these are the ones that we've had. And obviously, we discussed at Cabinet the last week. So the in year SEND overspend is currently forecast to be fifty five point five million, which makes the cumulative deficit in total around two hundred and twenty four million. Now, there are some contributions to that. The government safety valve contribution is six point three million. And DCC support that we've applied is around fifty million. So the cumulative effect after all the contributions is that our forecast of month six is that the cumulative deficit is a hundred and sixty seven million. It's an enormous amount and it is nearly sixty million worse than trajectory under the safety valve agreement. So not a great place to be, to be honest, but that's the reality of the figures.
And how in the longer term is that intended to be funded?
Through you, Chair, I think if I could answer that, I would be a very popular person in local government. We travelled up to the County Council's Network Conference on Monday and every county council there can perfectly explain what the problem is, what the lack of funding is. There was representatives from government there, SIPF, all the clever accountants. We all know what the problem is, but nobody has the solution. Central Government needs to bring forward the White Paper. So we need to fix the SEND problem and make sure that we're delivering good quality education for our young people as a primary objective, but also one that's within the means and affordable. Until we do that, anything trying to fix the deficit will be, it's not going to work. We need to fix the problem and then look at the deficit. As for what options are available, nothing concrete has come out from government. There's been a few suggestions, but I wouldn't want to say anything now because there was nothing certain. So the answer, Chair, is we don't know, which is not helpful, like exact.
Thank you. Councillor Kearney, please.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Mitchell stole my thunder by asking about the budget, so I'll leave that. The government are looking to reduce interest rates. How does that affect our borrowing? Is index linked? Or if the interest rates come down, does that put us in a better place? Or do we just reschedule the borrowing to make money from the interest or not? How does it work?
So all the council's debt is at fixed rates. So changes in interest rates do not affect the majority of the council's debt. Where a reduction in interest rates will help is where we have loans that mature and we then repay those. But because of the position where we then have to take out new loans to replace them and those loans can generally be taken out at lower rates than the ones that we are repaying. As you say, the anticipation is that rates will come down further and therefore where we are refinancing loans at the moment, we are doing them on a shorter term basis, on the basis that then in a year's time, we can then refinance them at a lower rate still and therefore make savings on the interest payments budget. Where we just need a little bit of balance is that what we wouldn't want is to have too much maturing all at the same time because then that gives us a risk that if we just hadn't hit the wrong point in this cycle, we could then be having to refinance a lot at a higher rate, which would not be helpful. So therefore, we try and balance that out, which is why we've got, where we repaid forty six million pounds of loans a couple of years ago, we've refinanced that on a one year basis. And then we continually refinancing those with this transaction that we're looking to do at the moment. We're proposing to do that over a three year basis so that we've not got too much all maturing all at once.
Councillor Kearney, any more questions there?
No, I was pretty sure I knew the answer, but I just wanted to make sure that I was right.
Thank you. We'll move to councillor Ead, then please.
Thanks. Yes, my question is regarding section seven on prospects for the next financial year. And paragraph seven point three talks about externalising past internal borrowing to free up cash for the SEND deficit. And it says if we reach the point where the authority's capital financing requirement is fully funded by external borrowing, then there will be no further ability to undertake further borrowing. We have an assessment of when we're likely to reach that cliff edge, which means we can't borrow anymore.
So we're probably likely to hit that at the current rate at some point during twenty seven, twenty eight. So we'll be getting towards it by the end of March twenty seven. But I would estimate at some point in twenty seven, twenty eight, we would potentially reach that point. Clearly, that's the point where the SEND deficit becomes absolutely critical because if we continue to spend, we can't then borrow anymore. We can't do anything to replenish our cash resources unless we're budgeting big revenue contributions into our budget to fund that deficit, which is possible, but would then put a huge stress on the services that we have to provide and trying to make that level of saving. But we really will need the government to come up with a solution. Otherwise, we would stand to literally run out of cash at that point.
So yeah, so there's not a huge amount we can do. We're relying on the government stepping in, as they promised to do for a while now, to come up with a solution. And we're still waiting.
I think Donna would just like to come in here, please.
It has been recognised that this is a national government issue. It's not a local government issue. We have been assured by the key contacts in finance and government that a resolution to this will be coming forward in the next few months and will be addressed for the next financial year. We're not quite sure what that solution is. And certainly, as chief executives, we discussed that at County Council's Network this week. But I think it's important to say that we can circulate that information to members that we're not the only council in this position. I think it's really important to, you know, looking at this with colleagues yesterday in finance, that when you begin to look now across the country, then you actually see that in many ways our SEND deficit is, if we would say, slowing down in comparison to other councils that are now accelerating beyond where we are. But I'm quite happy to circulate that information to all members so that members understand that actually it is now a national issue and it is an issue for all councils. And we will be keeping, I'm sure the Cabinet leader and myself are happy to update you on any developments on this matter as we go through the next months. But we have been assured that there will be a resolution to it prior to us budget setting in February.
Thank you, councillor Ead. Are you okay with that? Fantastic. If we could move to councillor Hookway, please.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I make the comment that I'm rather surprised that this particular item isn't being dealt with under part B because I think there are a whole number of questions that we need to ask. And I'm going to try and put some of them. Basically, upon what Marcus just said, a number of comments I want to sort of come back on. Firstly, I noted that we are lending to other local authorities. I'm a bit surprised about that. In view of local government organisation coming up, there must be some uncertainty about that. And I'd like some reassurance that something is being done to make sure we're not going to lend to authorities, they're going to disappear, or what happens to those unitary authorities. A second comment I'd like to ask is about commercial properties. I'm hopeful that we don't have any commercial properties that we're involved with. And therefore, I'd like to know exactly how many commercial properties we are involved in with lending money to. And my final point, and the reason really why I'm talking about this should be in part B. We have debts of four hundred and thirty six million to the Public Works Loan Board. As I understand it, that should be for particular projects, facilities and so on. And as a new member, I would like to know exactly where that four hundred and thirty six million is applied to, please. And what facilities it refers to. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Who would like to come back on that one?
Could I just confirm, first of all, that none of that needs to be in part two? I'm quite content with the answers being that one. It's all public knowledge, Eric.
In terms of the LGR question, we've already been assigned in Devon Regional Lead, who as chief executives, we met earlier this week. John Metcalf has been assigned to the eleven councils. We are meeting in person in January and there is a whole set of guidance that local councils must follow together in terms of all financial matters. There's a key list of activities that we've received in terms of what we will work through. There are agreements that get put in place about debts, liabilities, assets, finances. And it's expected that once the chief executives meet in person in January and look at the programme of work that John has set out, that I know, speaking in behalf of councillor Brazil and councillor Arnold, that in terms of LGR, that we would then expect that the eleven council leaders across Devon would get together in January to then look at that in terms of making sure that there's some form of governance and accountability so that all matters, finance, debt, borrowing, are held together by the council leaders as we go through the process.
Thank you. Just to add to that, I mean, there is a very well established market for lending between local authorities. And when we make investment decisions for available cash, then we will look at what the best rate we can get. That may be through investing it in a bank. It may be investing it by lending to another local authority. It's well established that no local authority has ever defaulted on any loan that is received from another local authority. And just as an example, going back, can't remember how long, but we did loan money to Sedgmore District Council. Before that loan was due for repayment, Sedgmore Council ceased to exist as part of Somerset becoming unitary. That loan was repaid to us at the appropriate date by Somerset Council. So the debt just automatically passed across from Sedgmore to Somerset Council when it became a unitary authority. So we have, I'm sure there's plenty of other examples of where a unitary authority has taken on the debt of its preceding authorities and has then repaid that appropriately at the right time. That was one point. As I think I referred to earlier, a number of authorities going back, particularly when interest rates were really, really low, sort of half a percent, and you couldn't really get much return from putting your money in the bank or with other local authorities. Several authorities did choose to borrow money and then invest that in purchasing commercial property just to receive a return. A lot of that was funded on short term debt that then had to be refinanced at a much higher level of interest. And that then completely undermined the financial case for what they did. We have never done that as a council. We've always adopted a prudent response. The one thing we have done, which we still have, is that we made an investment of ten million in a property fund rather than in buying a specific item of property that is run by CCLA, which stands for Churches, Charities and Local Authorities. And they run a property fund for people to invest in. At the time, we have continued to get a return of about four percent of that fund, which is now probably about the same as we get from lending to other local authorities or building societies. But at a time when we could only get about half a percent from those, it was a good fund to invest in. So we've maintained that for a number of years. And that is much lower risk than actually choosing to invest directly in particular buildings as other local authorities have done. I think there was one more question that you asked.
Well, yes, it was. And the reason why I was talking about part B really was the Public Works Loan Board, you know, four hundred and thirty six million. What's that invested in?
So that four hundred and thirty six million, pretty much all dates back to more than sixteen years ago. The way that capital financing works is you have a capital programme and then you have sources of finance to fund that. But it's not, I'm trying to think of the word. It's not hypothecated against particular individual projects. You look at what you need to borrow to fund the capital programme as a whole. But we have got some figures which we can provide. I can't do them off the top of my head in this meeting, but we can provide you with an analysis of what the capital programme was funding going back those sixteen years, to which most of those loans related. But they would stem from probably a period of about fifteen or sixteen years before that. So some of that is quite difficult to still trace in that way. But we can provide the analysis that we have done.
Thank you. If I can just interject here and bring in Angie Sinclair, please.
Thank you, Chair. Marcus, very well covered much that I was going to come in. So firstly, apologies for not being with you in person today. I've picked up a snuffle along the way and I think members would not thank me for sharing that around. So I'm joining you online today. Mark is quite right, the county councillor has always been very prudent and we have not entered into any commercial arrangements that some authorities have. So we're not exposed to that commercial risk. And as far as the borrowing, I think the only thing to add to what Marcus said is that because it was all so long ago, it was accounted for under proper accounting at that time. And at that time, you could borrow ahead of need. So even if we borrowed in a certain year and look at the capital programme for that year, it doesn't mean that that borrowing was directly attributable to that capital programme. It could have been borrowed in advance for a future year's capital programme. Can't do that anymore, but at the time, it was proper accounting that that could be done. So and as Marcus said, we don't know, there isn't a one for one match. And it's all such a long time ago. But as Mark says, we do know what the capital programme funded. We just can't tell you asset by asset what it was spent on. But it was all proper accounted for at the time. It was under a loans pooling system back then, which we don't have anymore and would all have been subject to external audit at the time. So I'm content, there is nothing here that we should be concerned about. Thank you, Chair. I hope that's helpful.
Thank you. Councillor Hookway, is there anything you'd like to come back on with that?
Yeah, well, yes, just to say many thanks to officers for their explanations. I'm very grateful for that. I'm not an expert in this area at all. But I am a bit concerned that we have four hundred and thirty six million pounds of debt. That is a long term debt that doesn't appear to cover any specific item. And
Sorry, can I just come in there and get you to put your microphone a bit closer?
I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry, yes. So and not being a financial expert and having had a very detailed explanation, which I'm very grateful, I am a bit concerned that four hundred and thirty six million pounds worth of debt, which is which is over sixteen years old and financed a capital programme and doesn't appear to match any specific item. And I would like to, I think we ought to have a think about how we're going to repay that long term. And I think I'm just, you know, because I think that's something that residents will be asking and will be expected to ask. And one of the things that I have learned as a councillor in my relatively short time as a councillor is the thing that you really need to be on your mark on is exactly that residents are as good on finance as you or I are. So we do need, I think, to have some discussion about how we're going to deal with that in the long term. But that's probably for another meeting. But thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Move to councillor Ketchin, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just going to ask about the send debt again. Don't want to bang the same drum at a slightly different point. It's a hundred and sixty seven million net. Can I ask how that debt's been serviced? Does I understand that the gross pot is a sort of outside the normal budget and protected? But there'll be a liability associated with servicing that debt. How's that being dealt with? Is it just added into the debt or are we having to actively pay that off as well? Can you sort of describe what risks are associated with that?
So technically, it's not a debt. It's money that we've spent that we haven't had a budget to fund. If you went back three or four years, then the council had cash reserves, cash balances of in excess of two hundred and fifty million. So what effectively it means is that where we had high cash balances, we've now got low cash balances. So we haven't borrowed to fund special needs deficit because we are not allowed to borrow to fund it under the regulations currently. But it simply means that we've taken the money that we've got in the bank and used it. So there would be an opportunity cost, if you like, in that we're not now able to invest that money and get a return from it. But it's not technically a debt.
Thank you for that clarity.
Okay, can I just check? Angie doesn't want to come in there. Angie Sinclair? I think Donna does.
That's fine. Thank you.
Yes, Donna, please.
I just think it's important for families listening to say that you can look at this as a debt or a deficit. But actually, it's been an investment in our most vulnerable children across the country because the policy changed in two thousand and fourteen. And also, you know, all councils across the country have seen our particular issues post Covid. When you look at the spend and, you know, vulnerabilities for our children after Covid, you see the charts escalating. But I think it's really important to say that you can talk about this as a send or a deficit. And I know we're here to discuss the finances, but for families out there, it was doing the right thing for our most vulnerable children. And that particular escalation we're seeing across the country happened post Covid. So it's maybe the question about actually just for families to hear that we've invested in our children who needed additional support across the country after Covid. And I think when you hear a lot of experts speaking, it was our children who were hugely affected by Covid in terms of the disruption that created, you know, an education system and special educational needs. So I think it's just important to say that I don't want families out there thinking that this has been the wrong thing to do. We all need to find a resolution to it and that's why we're looking forward to the white paper in two thousand and twenty six about how we work differently to support our most vulnerable children in their communities. But I think it's just important for families listening to hear that.
Thank you very much. Councillor Selis, please.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, the chief exec has just said what I was going to say because people might be listening. And I think it's important to say what you just did. So I thank the chief executive for that. And also, if you have a chat with people in your group, they might be able to give you some history on ancient debts. And just for clarification, how much if we were to repay the fixed rate debt that we have? I believe it was originally six hundred million that was borrowed. How much if we were to pay early, how much would the penalty be? If you've got that stat.
I can't, I can't, I can't answer that, but it would be significant.
And that's, I think, for new members, that's why it is fixed. And there is a huge penalty if, that's been my understanding.
Just to go back, I mean, in response to councillor Ketchin's question, I just referred to the fact that if we go back four or five years, then we had much higher level of cash balances than we have now. At that time, there was much discussion about, well, can we repay some of the debt? And the issue was, and because particularly at a period of very low interest rates, the premium on repaying that debt early was huge and just would not have been in the overall financial interests of the council. The fact that the ability to actually repay and reduce the level of those premiums, because as interest rates go up, then you can actually repay the debt at a much lower level of premium or even at a discount in some cases because it's very much about whether the debt that we repaid could then be loaned out at a better rate than they're getting from us, in which case they're much happier to re, for us to repay it. But at the time, we could have afforded to repay the debt, but the premiums made it not financially viable to do that because of the level of the premium. Now the premiums are much lower, but we can't repay the debt because we don't have the cash available to do it.
Thank you. I don't have anybody else down for questions. Is there anybody else who would like to ask before we stop there? No? Okay, thank you. Oh, yep.
Just briefly, I'd just like to, you said a small sum of money. I hadn't actually noticed how small the sum of money for benchmarking was going to be from MUFG, sorry, Chair, the Mitsubishi UFJ Financial Group. It's less than six hundred quid. It's just about an hour and a half of our interest income. So I think it's probably worth doing it because we don't know what we don't know and just having that as a fallback. I mean, I know we've got all sorts of information from other places, but for that sort of money, it seems worthwhile.
Well, we are happy to do that, that sum of money, if that's what people think we should be doing.
Oh, yes, councillor.
Thank you, Chair. Just confirmed cabinet did endorse the comments of the committee and we're very happy to do the benchmarking. I think obviously the officer advice is it wouldn't give a huge amount of value to the process. Obviously, the cost of it is one thing, obviously, officer time. But it is, if the committee wishes for us to do it, then we absolutely will. I think the officer was just suggesting that it might not offer any value.
Do any other members have any comments on that? Everybody happy? Yes.
That's what it says in the report, that it will.
So we're happy with that.
Okay, fantastic. Right, okay, so.
So I'm sorry, Chair. I'm very confused about what's just happened the last few minutes. So if you could have some clarification, because I don't want to vote on anything I'm not sure about.
Absolutely. Louise, if you could.
Sorry, I just wanted to double check. So the recommendation for this paper is that the committee consider whether it wishes to draw to the attention of the cabinet. Any observations on the Treasury Management midyear stewardship report? There's just been a discussion around spending money on benchmarking. Sorry. So the recommendation on the report is that the committee consider whether it wishes to draw to the attention of the cabinet. Any observations on the Treasury Management midyear stewardship report? I just wanted to be clear because while the cabinet member said that they endorsed the recommendation or suggestion from scrutiny last time around the benchmarking, it sounded like the cabinet member was just wanting to confirm that this is what the committee want to do based on the officer feedback, want them to undertake that benchmarking exercise. I'll just give way to the cabinet member, if that's okay, because I know that you've got your hand up, councillor Pecowsky.
If I may, Chair, just to clarify, the benchmarking will go ahead unless you say now you don't want us to. So that's a bit confusing, I get. But I think the officer was just giving the opportunity that you could tell us not to do it, but it will go ahead. So you don't have to tell us to do it.
That's much, that's helpful.
Councillor Selis, is that clear now?
I think it needs to be spelt out. So you're saying about allowing the money to be spent on people to do the benchmarking. Is that what you're talking about? Or can we just, could you spell it out to me, please?
If I may, Chair. So the amount is around five hundred and eighty pound, I think. The cabinet endorsed it. Officers will go ahead with it. I think there was just an opportunity to explain this morning that it wasn't felt that it would be of much value, but we will go ahead with it. I think I'll confirm now that the benchmarking will go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Great. Okay, so I'll now close the questions. The recommendation in the paper, again, I'll say it again, considers whether it wishes to draw the attention to the cabinet of any observations on the Treasury Management midyear stewardship report. I don't think we've actually had any recommendations coming forward from members. So the minutes of this item will be submitted to the cabinet for their consideration. Yep. And again, we'll vote. So if I could have a proposer, please. Thank you very much. And a seconder, thank you. And if we could all have a show of hands, please. Four? Wonderful. Any against? Any abstentions? No. So, yeah, that's moved. Thank you very much. And there are no part two items. So thank you all and I can now close the meeting at twelve thirteen. Thank you very much.